Well, everyone, it's 6:30. So I think we should begin. I'd like to welcome everyone. I suppose we can keep the slides going while I'm giving my opening remarks. Welcome everyone to tonight's Candidates Forum for the Dane County Board of Supervisors election on April 5th. My name is Arden Rice. I am a volunteer with Eastside Progressives and I will be moderating tonight's forum. The Eastside Progressives, or ESP, is an action team for local and national campaigns, as well as a group committed to offering engagement and educational opportunities for voters in our neighborhoods and throughout Dane County. We strive to be a racially, ethnically, and economically diverse community of people committed to social justice. We will be recording tonight's forum and posting the recording on our YouTube channel. The link to this recording will be posted on the Eastside Progressives Facebook page as well. It may not be there for a day or so, but we want to make it available so you can share it with friends and neighbors who were unable to join us tonight. Some logistics about tonight's forum. The chat feature of Zoom is turned off and all participants have been muted except for myself and the candidates. We ask that if you are not one of the candidates, or myself as moderator, or our timer Sue Jones, that you turn off your webcam. The forum questions were prepared by a subcommittee of ESP volunteers with inputs solicited from the public VR Facebook page. Issues around diversity, equity, and inclusion have been in the forefront of public debate in the Madison area and nationwide. Rather than limit our discussion of these topics to just one or two questions tonight, we encourage the candidates to include in their responses to each question how the subject can be addressed through a lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have Sue Jones, serving as our timer this evening. She will hold up a card when the candidates have 20 seconds remaining to answer a question, and again when the time has run out. All questions will be either one-minute or two-minute questions. I will announce the timing aloud for a response before I read each question. The order of responses from the candidates has been selected at random for each round of questions. There will be eight questions, and in addition, each candidate will have one minute for opening remark and one minute for closing remarks. Joining us tonight, we have five candidates for four supervisory seats. First is Rick Rose, running unopposed for District 16. Next up is Jacob Wright, running for the 17th District, also unopposed. And next, we have two candidates for the 24th District, Clint Kivany and Sarah Smith. Last of all, we have Melissa Ratcliffe, running for the 36th District. We also invited Andrew McKinney, who is running for the 36th District as well, but he was unable to attend. Following the 2020 census, the boundaries for these seats have been redistricted. We urge you to confirm what district you live in prior to the election. And without further ado, let's begin with the first question. So the order of the respondents, or I'm sorry, with the opening remarks. So to begin with, we'll have Rick Rose, then Jacob Wright, then Clint Kivany, then Sarah Smith, and finally Melissa Ratcliffe. So first up, Rick Rose, followed by Jacob Wright. Rick, would you like to start us off?
For sure. Thank you so much, Arden, and thank you, Retsch, for organizing the event. It's been a pleasure. Behind the scenes, seeing how you guys have committed to this and put it together. I'm actually sitting in the heart of District 16 of the afternoon to get on the weekend, to canvass the neighborhood, to talk to the folks that live here, and to find out why they love, like myself, to live, play, and work in Dane County. And I want to do all I can, and I'm promising everybody, to give back and do even better, to even better the reasons that I'm grateful. I'm very grateful also for the support I've received by current supervisors. And the shower was in this district before redistricting, and he called on day one of my announcing my candidacy to support me. And we've been working on a weekly basis, if not even more regularly. Others that are on this call that are current supervisors, and specifically Michelle Ritt, who encouraged me to step it up and be a part. I'm committed to several things. You can find on my website, which we'll post later. But I'm committed to children and families protection, sustainability and development, restorative justice in crimes of poverty, and also accessibility. There's nothing like local government. You can be a part of it. You can contribute to it. You can make a change in our day-to-day being through government. Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, Jacob Wright, and then Clint Kivany.
Yes, hi. Thank you. So my name is Jacob Wright, and I'm running in District 17. That's City of Madison, neighborhoods of East Moreland, High Stand Park, Rolling Meadows, LVM, and East Buckeye. I come here today as a longtime progressive Democrat and a longtime East sider. I've lived east of the Capitol since 2005. Today, I live here in LVM with my wife, who is an MMSD public school teacher, and my two children who go to the public school down the street. So I'm very tied and committed to this community, and I'm running to be of service to it. So I think that for everyone to thrive here, we need to realize a vision of racial and economic justice that does not exist here today. We have disparities that lead the nation, and we have to act to remedy those. We also can't deny the reality of pollution and climate change. It's a crisis. It's getting worse and worse. We're seeing the effects locally and globally, and we have to act. So I think the way that we start to do that is through collaboration and inclusiveness as the way forward. I think we can solve these problems together, and we can right the past wrongs together. And it starts here today. So I thank you all for being here and for holding this forum.
Thank you. Next, Clint Kivany, and then Sarah Smith, followed by Melissa Ratcliffe.
Hi, everyone. My name's Clint. I've lived in this community here in District 24 since I was about five years old. And I'm really grateful to have grown up here. It's a place that I love very much. Last spring, when the city of Manona made an offer of employment to a police officer, really serious history of excessive use of force, I organized a grassroots campaign that ultimately prevented that hire. And now I'm running for office because I want to make sure that we reform that law enforcement hiring process to make sure that that sort of activism isn't necessary, that we have officers that we can all trust and depend on. And I also want to carry forward that grassroots momentum, because I believe our government, especially our local government, works best when as many people are involved as possible. Whether it's reforming law enforcement, or addressing the toxic algae blooms on our lakes, or perhaps most importantly, increasing the housing supply to keep Dane County affordable for working families. I want to bring sure that I bring as many people with me to the table as possible, because I think that's how we will best address these pressing problems. Thank you.
Next is Sarah Smith, and then Melissa Ratcliffe.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Supervisor Sarah Smith. I represent District 24 on the Dane County Board. I've had the honor of serving on the board since I was elected in 2020. I also currently serve as the Director of Public Affairs at the State Agency. Previously worked for Senator Patty Shachner and State Treasurer Sarah Godluski. I have a long history of progressive activism and career experience working in progressive politics, so my values on that are clear. I've dedicated my career to public service and brought that passion and dedication to the Dane County Board, and have a record of success in my first term, including authoring a $2 million budget amendment to preserve the San Damiano property, which was important to prevent potential harmful runoff and increased flooding risk that could have resulted from its development. So that's one example of the ways that I can work quickly, collaboratively, and boldly to benefit District 24. And that's why I've earned the support of local leaders like Mayor Mary O'Connor, Madison Alders, Grant Foster, and J.L. Curry, Representative Jimmy Anderson, and Senator Melissa Agard. I hope all the voters in District 24 will consider joining them and supporting my reelection. Thank you.
Melissa.
Thank you. I'm Melissa Ratcliffe, and I'm running for reelection to District 36, which includes a portion of Madison that is east of the interstate and south of Cottage Grove Road, the town and village of Cottage Grove, and the southern half of the town of Sumprary. I'm a mother of two teenagers, have been married for 20 years, and have been a paralegal for 22 years. My priorities are to continue to listen, learn, partner, collaborate, and grow in order to advance items to help people in my district, communities, and county. During my time on the board, I've been working collaboratively with other supervisors, local officials, county and municipal staff, community groups, local leaders and residents to understand the needs of our district and communities, to bring forward initiatives and amenities to help our residents, communities, and municipalities. Two of my top priorities for the coming term are related to broadband access and issues concerning our population, and specifically housing for our older population. I ask for your support and vote on April 5th to continue this work. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Let's proceed to question one. And this is a one-minute question. The order will be first Jacob Wright, then Sarah Smith, then Melissa Ratcliffe, then Rick Rose, and then Clint Kivany. Question one is, since the release of the Race to Equity Report in October 2013, Dane County has seen a resurgence of commitment, planning, and action around achieving greater racial justice in the county. What are the three most important issues facing the county board? And how would you address those concerns in a manner which lessens equity gaps which are present in our county? First up, Jacob, and then Sarah Smith.
Yeah, thank you. So thank you for highlighting that, because as I said, the disparities we face here are immense, and we do need to act on that. So a couple of specific things I would do is I would advocate for expanding the Affordable Housing Fund. And I would want to work hand-in-hand with skilled nonprofits to expand homeownership opportunities, because that is one area where we have a pretty substantial gap. And I would want to include specifically groups who have been historically excluded and marginalized from homeownership, because that's a tremendous economic opportunity, and that's a matter of fairness. Another area of disparity is pollution of our local groundwater. We know that that disproportionately impacts marginalized communities, and that's an area where we need to act. And beyond that, I would want to be somebody who listens and develops detailed positions in collaboration with the communities that have been impacted and historically excluded. I think that's the answer. That's the way forward, and we need to give them a voice, and I'm going to work to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Sarah.
Thank you. I make an effort to approach all of my work through a racial justice lens. I think all of the issues that I'm sure we'll get into in more detail tonight, from clean water, homelessness prevention, all of those things have a racial impact. As Jacob just noted, I mean, making sure everybody in every neighborhood has access to clean drinking water is an issue of racial justice. Making sure that everyone has access to safe and affordable housing, housing that's free from things like lead paint, that's an issue of racial justice. And those are some of the priorities that I've worked on in my first term around preventing homelessness, providing resources for people who are experiencing homelessness, supporting initiatives to increase accountability and transparency around PFAS use, some of these risks that are impacting people's health. Additionally, I've supported initiatives to increase funding for food banks to prevent and address food insecurity. That's something that's increased during the pandemic, and of course, any of those issues that we've seen increase during the pandemic have typically disproportionately affected people of color. So those are a few of the things that I've worked on in my first term and would build on in my second.
Thank you. And now Melissa, and then Rick.
Thank you. The three issues I would, I will continue to work to address are clean water, affordable housing. I brought forward the first affordable housing complex to the Village of Cottage Grove during my terms, and, but mainly broadband access, expanding access to broadband throughout our rural communities is very important for it to allow people to be able to get a job, to work from home, to do their schoolwork, to have access to medical and mental health treatment. The the lack of broadband access in our rural areas is very disparaging. But additionally, I'll work to look at the affordability and reliability aspect, which is also an issue to access broadband that impacts our cities as well. So in the coming term, those are the things that I will work to address. Thank you.
Next, we have Rick, and then Clint. And at any time, I'm welcome to read questions again if necessary, and we'll come out of your time.
Thank you so much, Arden. Yeah, I would say specifically to the three concerns and areas that I would be focusing on is definitely housing. It's interesting, all my predecessors, and I'm sure those behind me here in the conversation will talk about housing. It is an issue in Dane County. We know that. You can be someone that's working at Epic, and part of the success of being one of the best cities for a millennial to live, or a county for a millennial to live, but you could also be someone that doesn't have a roof over their heads. I am fortunate enough to be able to go on the square and go dine where I choose, but there are others along my pathway there that aren't. And that's, that's an issue. For, for someone that workforce that hires 40 people that come to work in Dane County, it's a challenge for me when the reason they're turning down a job opportunity is because they can't afford housing. Second of all, health. Health disparity in this country is despicable. This is something that has been a former progressive president had taken his hands around and held tightly. That is at risk because of people that followed him, and to regain that health and that ability to meet people where they're at. Some people don't have the accessibility or the availability of a vehicle to go in and get healthcare. So telemedicine is something we've learned is very powerful, just that ability to meet people where they're at. And also, lastly, I want to talk about humanity. When we get right down to it, we're all people. We are all equal. We can follow whatever belief systems we read and our constitution and how we're set up as a country. We need to forward, move forward with understanding there's equality, and we need to all just come to terms with that. Thank you.
I think the Race to Equity Report is really interesting, and then it talks about the need for leaders to find ways to get better-paying jobs for folks in marginalized communities, especially the black community. And I think one specific way to do that is by completing the Destination District project, the Alliance Energy Center. That project would alone create a lot of jobs, but in the long term, it would serve as a means of increasing investment in Madison, Wisconsin. And when companies and startups are meeting with investors and getting off the ground through conferences that are happening at the Destination District, which happened because of county dollars, that puts the county in an excellent place. Make sure that these companies are participating in programs to make sure that these jobs are going to folks who might not normally be getting that opportunity. Otherwise, of course, housing is very important. That's something we'll talk about more. And then climate change impact and mitigating that impact, especially on marginalized communities. As things heat up, even things like shade cover are really important, and across the nation in poorer areas, there's a lot less tree cover. And that's true in Dane County, too. So things as simple as planting more trees so people can enjoy the summer is really important.
Thank you. And on to question two. This is a two-minute question. The order of the question will be, first we'll have Clint, and then Sarah, and Melissa, and Jacob, and Rick. And the question two, again for two minutes, is what is your experience or plan in using specific methods for increasing dialogue between yourself and your constituents, and ensuring that you are accessible to all you represent? When your constituents hold strong differing views on a hot topic, how would you decide and communicate your vote?
Thank you. That's a great question. Constituent engagement is one of my favorite things. And I think it starts with maintaining a little bit of a campaign attitude throughout your term in office, going out and knocking on doors and introducing yourself to people. A lot of times during the campaign, people only knock on doors where it's like, all right, this person's voted in the last three spring elections, so I need to talk to them. I want to talk to everyone, especially outside of campaign season, because it's the folks that don't vote in the spring who are often most impacted by these issues. And if you show up at their door and ask them how they feel about something, they love that. They really appreciate that. And it's going to have a lasting impact on keeping them involved. So literally being out in the street, talking to people is one thing. I also want to make sure that at a bare minimum, I'm putting out a monthly update to everyone in the district, talking about what's going on in the county as a whole, as well as what I'm doing specifically. And then another thing that's really important is giving folks that opportunity to get involved. With the No Bad Comps in Manona campaign, that's something where I was almost in a state of panic. I was so scared that this officer was going to get hired and our street would be less safe because of it. And I contacted our elected officials, and I felt like I got a pretty lukewarm response. And I knew that my voice alone wouldn't change anything, but when I was able to activate a couple other hundred people, then we made a difference. And so similarly, when there's important decisions that are being made, I want to give people an opportunity to say, hey, email these folks, all these folks. If you care about this, go to this meeting, and just make it as easy as possible for folks to get engaged. Because, you know, just building that culture of grassroots engagement is extremely powerful and extremely important, and it's one of the core reasons why I'm running.
Thank you. Sarah, and then Melissa.
Thank you. It's your point about, you know, conversing with people who have strong opinions or your opinions that differ. One of my favorite things is knocking on doors. I've been knocking on doors for over decades, I don't know, since I was young, really. And I always have said that I've rarely, if ever, knocked on a door where I couldn't find something to agree on with somebody. There's always an opportunity for us to, you know, see humanity in each other and make a connection, and build some bridge where we can move forward in, you know, a way that we can all agree on. So, you know, we might not be able to agree on the particular issue that I brought up at the beginning, but we can agree on, you know, the need for fair redistricting opportunities. And Dane County has been a great example of that, but, you know, bringing that to the rest of the state, or we might be able to agree on the need for cleaner water in our lakes so that people can safely eat the fish when they go fishing in the mornings and know that it's going to be safe to eat. So I've worked, you know, during my first term to provide opportunities during the pandemic to be available, an outdoor event. So I've held monthly office hours at the Manona Farmers Market to be available to speak with folks, and they've certainly brought up concerns or questions or ideas that they've had. And I've also been able to use that opportunity to share information about things such as our redistricting process and share the deadlines and timelines for them to respond to the community survey so that our redistricting process represented them. So I really enjoy engaging with constituents, and I worked very hard to be very responsive when people have reached out to share their opinions and thoughts, and explained myself on votes, whether we agreed or disagreed, because, as I said, there's always something that we're going to find some connection over. And I think that's one of the things that I enjoy most about public service. And all the years that I've spent working in activism has shown that to be true. So I'd like to continue to build on that and build even more bridges and connections with all of my neighbors and community leaders here in Manona and Madison. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Melissa, and then Jacob, followed by Rick.
Thank you. I, I love this question. Thank you so much. So I wrote down a list of what I have done to reach out to constituents and people in my district. And first off, I guess knocking doors for the campaign is the easy one, since we're in campaign season. I'm also a co-leader of the Cottage Grove Action Team, and so we knock doors for local candidates, as well as in other elections, too. So I have the connection throughout the year with elections. I attend community events, which is a lot of fun, talking with my neighbors and new people that are visiting our community and checking out our businesses. Additionally, I'm a member of local community groups so that I can help to understand issues that are impacting our community. I'm a member of the Friends of Lake Higanza, so I can understand the impact to our lakes. I'm a member of the Cottage Grove Optimists that do a snack pack for students who don't have, or that are food insecure during the weekends, which unfortunately is a need in our community. I respond to all calls and emails that I receive from constituents because I think it is important that if you take the time to reach out to me, that it is something that is an issue that concerns you, that you want to know more about. So I am responsive in that regard. You can learn more about what I'm working on on my Facebook page or on my newly-launched website, ratcliffefordane county.com. And we can see if we agree on issues or not, and I'd love to hear from residents if there are anything that interests you or not. And so I, I look forward to continuing to hear from residents in my district. Thank you.
Next, we have Jacob, and then Rick.
Yeah, absolutely. This is a great question. And so something I'm focused on in my campaign and will be in my board service is making county business more accessible. You know, through the COVID pandemic, we've learned some lessons about how in a virtual situation, there are obviously disadvantages, but there's also a huge advantage for accessibility and being able to broaden participation in our meetings and in our business. And as we transition back into in-person, I know that the board is considering certain rules changes that would allow us to do a hybrid virtual option, and that's something that I would support to bring as many people as possible to the table, to the day-to-day business of what we do. As for other things I would do, you know, I'm doing this as a relationship-based campaign, and I want to speak to as many people as possible, as I know you all do as well. I do have a blog. I've already started to blog on it. I'm also, I also serve as on the Board of Directors for my own neighborhood association, and there are a number of other neighborhood associations, too, in my district, and I'm developing relationships with each of those. That means going to their meetings so that they know who I am. It means contributing regularly to their newsletters. And that extends also to social groups and other groups that might want to have me come speak to them or hear from them about their concerns. I'm always open to that kind of thing. Same with just one-on-one. If somebody wants to grab a coffee or a drink, I'm absolutely open to that. I'm easy to find. And that, that's something that I will always value. And the, the advantage of doing it that way is that it's proactive. I'm not trying to build a relationship when there's a crisis. The relationship is already built. And so when there's a crisis or when there's a disagreement, we can get right to work and solve problems together. We're not always going to agree on everything, but I'm always going to be transparent about why I make the decisions I make. You know, as I started the blog, one, one example is I spoke out in favor of maintaining the mask mandate when that came up on the board in January. And I blogged about that before I spoke. And in that blog, I listed the specific reasons and the studies that I was referencing in my testimony, and I'm going to keep doing that. Thank you.
Rick? Thank you.
Great question, like everybody said, but also great answers. I really have enjoyed my time getting to know all of you. Clint, I haven't had the opportunity to meet you, but our other future supervisors and current supervisors, thank you so much for your time and getting together in pre-conversations before April 5th, because indeed, it's the work that happens before an election, after the election that really matters. I'm going to say that when it comes to endorsements, I'm grateful. I'm very grateful the endorsements I've received from unions and other progressive organizations. I'm grateful for the people that nominated me in my communities when I was knocking on the doors and hearing their concerns. I'm also grateful for the people that supported me financially, many of them on this call today. It couldn't be done without a community. It takes a community, to quote one of my favorite people of all time, Hillary Clinton. You know, it takes a village. It takes all of us to understand who we are, the nuances of community, and to be able to work forward. But if you go to my website page, rickrosefordane county dot com, you will see I also have endorsements from my neighbors. And I know when I did my nomination party, I sang a little song. It wasn't so pretty, but I'm a huge fan of Sesame Street. I work in television programming, and one of the things I do is I've created a kids' show about the environment, to get kids out of the computers and into the outdoors. And my co-creator actually came from Sesame Street. And so these are the people in our neighborhood, the fire people, the school teachers. You know, these are the people that make a difference in our lives, the people that pave our roads. I mean, that's valuable information to know that they could save lives from the work we do. So all of that is important to me to get to know your community and keep constant contact with them. Also consensus, I'm going to speak to that real quickly when it comes to the stakeholders, not just the constituents, but the people making the decisions. I applaud everybody, Supervisor Ratcliffe is on this call, for the work that's been ahead of us for 10 years with the Jail Project. That came from consensus building, not compromise, not like Sarah gets her way, but then Rick gets this. It's about consensus. So thank you, guys, for the question, and I loved hearing, hearing you all speak.
Thank you. On to question three. This is also a two-minute question. And the order of respondents will be first Sarah Smith, then Melissa Ratcliffe, followed by Jacob Wright, then Rick Rose, and Clint Kivany. Question three, two minutes. Although there's a combination of Dane County housing options that fulfill the needs of many of our vulnerable citizens, there still is a gap in services. With increasing economic difficulties, this also affects those who are in a position to lose their homes and people seeking jobs without transportation options. Does your district have sufficient affordable housing? And what strategies could Dane County, I think there's some feedback, maybe someone's not mute. Thank you. So the question, does your district have sufficient affordable housing? What strategies should Dane County implement to increase permanent What strategies should Dane County implement to increase permanent, affordable and accessible housing, particularly in high employment opportunity areas that are connected to public transportation? And again, it's Sarah Smith first, followed by Melissa Ratcliffe. So Sarah?
Thank you. And that's a great question. I hear quite often in in Manona, I'm sure if anyone has looked at the housing market in Manona and in this area in general, I hear that all the time, that it's very challenging for people to either be able to stay in their homes or have, you know, young families moving into the community. And of course, having those intergenerational communities makes us all more successful. But if it's challenging for other young millennials like myself to access housing in a certain area, it's harmful to the entire community. And that is a concern and something I hear very regularly from folks. And it's pretty clear that we don't have enough affordable housing in this district. I don't know if there's a district in the county where we could say that there's enough affordable housing for everybody and everybody who needs to access it. So it is, it is something that's very important. And it's something that the city of Manona has been looking at. The plan commission recently, you know, has been considering a new, just a couple of blocks behind me here, a new apartment building to increase that density and create more opportunities for people who can afford maybe a lower rent than purchasing a house from the, you know, initially. So there are those sorts of things. But of course, that's, as I mentioned with the city, the city is, you know, the primary entity responsible for that in Manona and, you know, with the city of Madison. But earlier today, I was in the Lake Edge neighborhood knocking on doors too. And I heard that from folks there that they, you know, pointed out that they're in their neighborhood, they have some larger lot sizes. And they've sort of created a bit of a sprawl in that area where there could certainly be more people fit into those lots if it became a priority to create greater density and make it easier for everyone to access, you know, a home and a property for themselves to have that kind of neighborhood. So I do think that's very important. And I've particularly focused on homelessness prevention to make sure that people have access to get their feet under them to be able to get into that housing then, including support for, you know, legal counsel for people facing evictions and rapid rehousing programs. So it is a top priority of mine and something I hear from constituents all the time.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Melissa and then Jacob.
Thank you. So I'm in a unique position being on the village board in addition to the county board. And when I was first elected to the village board, one of my priorities was to look at more housing options for Cottage Grove because we have a lot of single-family housing there. And it started with education about the topic of housing for our board and working with candidates for the village board to get them interested in housing options. And I bring that up because it's about smart business, business growth. Residential and commercial growth go together. And increased residential apartments means increased businesses in my community. And while we get more businesses, that means that we're looking at better paying jobs coming to our community, which means hopefully that they can afford housing in our community. Additionally, though, we know that in Cottage Grove and in communities throughout Dane County, that there, that you need to have affordable housing. And Cottage Grove had none. The first affordable housing complex that's by moving out will be opening in Cottage Grove this summer. It's been, it takes a while for it to be developed and to be built. So it's, our Dane County Planning Department is amazing. Olivia Pari has put together people from different communities throughout Dane County to have this regional housing strategy that's going to start in May so that our different communities can work on affordable housing because it's not just a Madison issue, it's a whole county issue. And the other, the other part of that question is about transportation. And in Cottage Grove, we don't have any, but we're working on it.
All right, right under the wire. Thank you. Next, we'll have Jacob, then Rick, and finally Clint.
You'd think I'd know by now. Sorry. I'll actually dovetail off of Melissa's because you brought up transportation at the end. And that's on my list too. A lot of this is transit. That's huge because transit, a more county-wide view of transportation would just greatly expand the options that people have to get to and from economic opportunity. And also, let's not forget to and from recreation, because we don't just want this to be an economically viable place to live. We want this to be a fantastic place to live. And better transportation gets at all of that. You know, I think in terms of housing affordability here, we're in a crisis state and we need all hands on deck to fix it. I brought up the Affordable Housing Fund earlier on. That's something I would want to look at expanding. I would also want to work more closely with municipalities, like not just Madison, but also Manona, Cottage Grove, and other areas to expand these options for people and also to look at ways to develop smartly, ways to take economics into economic opportunity and impact, ways to uplift historically marginalized communities, and ways to connect people to one another. I know that one of my mentors, as I've made this journey onto the board, Supervisor Anthony Gray, has actually done this. He's done affordable housing development, and I've learned a lot from him. I've also learned a lot from working with my own city alder, J.L. Curry. And I know Supervisor Smith, you work with her on the joint committee as well. And so I'm looking to learn and grow and support all of that work, because like I said, I really do think it's all hands on deck. Eviction prevention is another big thing, looking to streamline processes around that and also to create better funding for that, making sure we're doing that in the future. You know, I do have some experience on this too. On my neighborhood board, we've heard from Moving Out and from other groups that have developed things like Ace Apartments, which is in my district, and other affordable housing. This is great collaboration and it's exactly what we need. And that's what I'm looking to support. I thank you.
Rick and then Clint.
Thank you again. I can't tell you, Jacob, how excited I am to work on some of the things you're talking about and with Supervisor Gray as well. There is some great work to be had. As I referenced earlier, housing is, and I would put in Jacob's word too, a crisis here in Dane County for some of the economic reasons I stated earlier. But the reality is, what is housing? Can we even talk about affordable housing when we walk downtown and see homeless people that don't even have a house? Can we talk about broadband when we don't even have people that have accessibility to a television set or accessibility to internet unless you go to a public library? That's important to me. I am very grateful. I am privileged to live in a home in the heart of my district and to be able to look at a cornfield every night before I go to bed. We know that's changing. You know, one of the things also to shift here is a little bit needing the fact, we need to get people housing before we can even talk.
I'm not sure if other people are.
We also need to look at this simply. We are, do you lose me there, Arden?
Yeah, but you're back.
Okay, cool. So I was saying, I'm fortunate here to be looking at a vast amount of land between Cottage Grove and Sun Prairie. This is the last bastion of development in the city of Madison in this part of Dane County. And I think it's time we look at alternate things. You know, Dane County prides itself to being so radical and liberal and progressive, but have we looked at anything beyond one family or multifamily housing? Let's be real and look at eco-village living. Let's look at green space and let's look at communal living. These are things that have been down in communities in Missouri and Massachusetts and San Francisco. You know, I'm hearing my tone right now. I sound angry. I'm not. I'm excited to get in and do this work. I know we can make a difference. But we have to think bigger and larger than we've currently been thinking. As far as transportation, I think we have the ability to write off of what Madison's doing. And I'm excited about that opportunity too, to see how we can expand that throughout the county. Thank you.
Clint?
As many other people have said, housing is a crisis. I think it's the most pressing issue that we face countywide. Doing more to increase the housing supply can take some of the pressure off the rent market. Something that's really tough right now is that with both inflation and the rapidly rising cost of construction material, most developers aren't wanting to build new developments that are aimed at the lower end of, you know, the rental market. And that's a serious problem. And I think one of the things we have to do is not just increase the housing supply, but diversify it. I'd love to see way more row houses. And those are the sorts of things that builds density, but it also still gives people the opportunity to own where they live and build that wealth. Because if we just become a society of these copy paste rental units with retail on the ground floor, people don't have that opportunity to build wealth where they live. And as we're talking about building these bigger developments, I'd love to see more diversity, not just in terms of having ground floor retail, but having small office space for small businesses and micro businesses, having live-in work units. That brings a lot more small service providers to the community. It allows them to stay in the neighborhood. Here on Manona Drive, we have an office building that's closed. It has, or is in the process of closing, has a half a dozen different counseling services. And as far as I know, none of them are staying in Manona because they can't find a small office. So we are losing that mental health provider. And I think that's a real problem. We also, for the folks that are chronically homeless and have severe mental illness, we do need more supportive housing units. There's some nonprofits here that are already doing great work in renovating dilapidated and foreclosed homes and turning them into permanently supportive units. I think that's something that we should continue to pursue, as well as pursuing another tiny home project to make sure that we have that transition phase housing for folks who need it as well.
Thank you. Next up was question four. This is also a two-minute question. And the order of respondents will be first Rick Rose, next Jacob Wright, third Clint Kevany, then Melissa Ratcliffe, followed by Sarah Smith. So two minutes for question four, and it is renovation of the Dane County Jail has been under discussion for decades. And the county board recently passed a resolution putting another $16 million toward the Dane County Jail consolidation project. What values would you bring to the board's short and long-term decision-making on the health and safety of the jail population, intervention and prevention measures to keep people out of the criminal justice system and creating pathways of success for those released from the Dane County Jail? So starting with Rick and then Jacob.
Thank you. And I want to thank Clint as well. Clint, you gave me some great thoughts and processes regarding this. You brought up mental health. This is a big subject regarding the reason for the jail expansion and what can come out of the jail expansion. There are many issues here, you know? Let's start by stating that this is one of my four key tenets to be involved. I'm somewhat grateful I didn't have to be a part of the vote for the Dane County Jail project. And I say that because not only the controversy and some of the flack point-blank that some of my colleagues or future colleagues have faced, it was tough. It was something that's gone on for 10 years that needed to come to fold. Clint also brought up the rising costs. And so the additional new $19 million or the millions of dollars that are going to the project is really a result that we didn't move faster in the 10 years that this has been in front of the board. So I'm very grateful, again, Supervisor Ratcliffe, Supervisor Shower, and those that moved this forward, Maureen as well. But when it comes to it, this, this plan includes reduction in jail beds and reduction in the ability to have residents in there. So my focus is really on restorative justice and crimes of poverty. One of the reasons I'm running for this position is I have been a court-appointed special advocate here in Dane County. I am also a guardian of a young man who's 20 years old that currently resides in the Dane County Jail system. I have a court hearing tomorrow at 1:30 to find out if he's even competent to face his felon charges. I am day-to-day in this work, guys. I work in children's services, family protection services to, to help reduce what's going on. You can go to my website, follow me on my YouTube page, and hear my feelings about restorative justice. There are many stakeholders. So often, we just focus on recidivism. You know, the goal is to have people not have to live in jail and repeat what's going on. And that only can happen in conversations when we have consensus, again, among the person that was harmed, the person that did the harm, and the community at large. We all have a place at the table. And sometimes it's just hearing, I'm sorry, I will do better, is enough than putting someone behind bars that can't afford a bailout. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Jacob and then Clint.
Yeah, sure thing. So one thing that comes to mind here is something that came up both in my conversations with Sheriff Calvin Barrett and with some of the unions. You know, there are apprenticeship programs now that, that help people develop skills so that when they leave jail, there's less recidivism and there's more economic opportunity. I know the Bricklayers Union is doing this, and this is something that I'd be looking to expand. And, you know, it's interesting because this is an area where everybody I talk to is on the same page. It's a great program. It just needs more support. So let's get it done. There are other things I want to do though, to make sure that we're, to make sure that our funding focuses first on prevention and reduction in incarceration. So I think a huge part of that is expansion of cares across the county. So that's a mental health crisis response. Another would be expanding violence prevention programs. That's a small line item right now. That's something I'd want to make bigger as something that we can do to potentially prevent incarceration to begin with. We could also implement weekend court that would reduce incarceration. We can expand restorative justice programs like the Community Restorative Court Justice Project. These are just a few ideas. You know, I look at the price tag of the jail, and I've, I've not been on the county board unlike some of the other people here. So I'm not read in on all the details, unfortunately. But something that concerns me is that all of this programming takes funding. And if we sink too much money into the, into the building itself on the front end, then we may find ourselves on the back end not being able to afford that stuff. And like I said, I don't know all of the details, but I'm looking forward to working with the board on making sure in future budgets, we account for that, because these are really the measures that we need in the long term to meet our values.
Thank you. Next, Clint and then Melissa.
First, I'd just like to address values and decision-making specifically on this project. I think this is an area where we cannot let the perfect become the enemy of the good. The conditions in the jail truly are inhumane. And I think it is hypocritical to call ourselves a progressive community and to let those conditions continue. And the longer you debate install this project, the longer people have to suffer in there. And I believe for folks who are incarcerated, we should do absolutely everything possible to give them a chance to turn their lives around, heal, to better themselves. And I believe that's reflected in the plans we've seen. I think especially the prioritization of natural light, which is so important for mental health, is something that's genuinely impressive to me, as well as the focus on reducing beds and increasing programming space, as others have alluded to, so that folks can develop skills while they are incarcerated. I think that's extremely important. Diversion programs are of course important. That's something we've touched on a lot. But I think we do need to do more to support those who are incarcerated and released from incarceration, especially those with substance abuse issues. You see far too many fatal overdoses from folks who were released from jail about seven to 10 days prior to their death. And I think that's something that's often overlooked because it happens to such marginalized people. And I really want to see specific interventions that address that. Otherwise, I agree with the idea of weekend court and expanding court hours. There's been a massive backlog throughout the COVID pandemic. And I think prioritizing or going through that backlog is fair to everyone. I mean, it's something that we need to do.
Thank you. Next, Melissa and then Sarah.
Thank you. So I did support the, and I do support the jail consolidation project because we do need a safe and humane facility for our jail residents. I have voted for and supported and will support Continued Criminal Justice Reform Initiatives, programs and services that the county board is working to put in place to prevent people from being in the position to be arrested and to help decrease our jail population. I supported the, the additional $16 million in funding for the jail because the city-county building, sixth and seventh floor floors are just horrendous. And it's, it's, it shouldn't be like that in Dane County. Oh, the jail that will be built will be another tool that we will have to prevent recidivism. While, while we have that one jail as a tool, it's not the only thing. It's not the only way to move forward. We need to continue to implement ways to prevent people from coming to jail because we are building it smaller. And as Dane County is the fastest-growing county in the state, we have shown, the county, county board has shown that through our work that we are able to maintain our jail population over the past decade. And that, that was the, the easy stuff to take care of maybe. But now we're looking at more in-depth things. And so I think it's important that in our coming budget in 2020, And so I think it's important that in our coming budget in twenty twenty-three that we gather information on our programs and services to better understand how well they're working or not, so that we can either improve and or expand these programs to be able to support our criminal justice reform efforts. Knowing how well these programs are working will help us to understand what we can put in place or continue um to address our uh these efforts. Thanks.
Now Sarah.
Thank you. Um, so I I appreciate what Supervisor Radcliffe just said on sort of studying and understanding the impact of many of the investments the county has already made. Um, I'm really focused on diversion and prevention. I think that that's the way toward true justice and making sure that our community is um just and fair for everyone. And past jail population studies had estimated that by twenty forty-five, our daily average jail population would be seven hundred and sixty-three residents. Um, but those studies at the time did not account for diversion programs that have been implemented since the start of the pandemic, even in the last two years. Um, that includes things like the increased use of electronic monitoring, piloting the CARES program, and I'm a huge fan of the CARES program. And I um in speaking with the Dane County Sheriff's deputies a few weeks ago, um sounded like they are also huge fans of it and would love to see it expanded. And I am all for that. I did some work on that um in my day job in years past um in other parts of the state, and I think that's incredibly important. Um, we've also invested in a mental health crisis center and creating a community justice center. Those are all efforts that I've supported, and those are all things that certainly will have had an impact and have already had an impact on our jail population. So the previous studies that don't account for that don't give us a full picture of what our jail population might be by twenty forty-five, as the previous study had. Um, so I think it's important to really understand all of the investments that we've made already as a county so we can continue to reduce the rate of incarceration as much as we can. While Dane County's incarceration rate might be one of the lowest in the country, we also have one of the highest incarceration rates of black folks in the country, and that's unacceptable. So I'm really focused on any opportunities that we can um take to understand all the things that have been implemented during the pandemic and some of those creative solutions and collaborative ways that we've been able to reduce incarceration and particularly focus on people of color and black folks who have been marginalized and harmed by our previous justice system and make sure that any future investments we make are for a justice system of the future and not one of the past. Thank you.
All right. Our next question, question five of eight, is a one minute question. And the order of respondents will be Melissa, then Clint, then Rick, followed by Sarah, and then Jacob. So for question five, again, one minute. Uh, county, city, village, town, and state elected representatives for our area are already collaborating on several important issues, including regional and transportation, planning, climate action, and public health. What additional coordination needs do you see across local governments in Dane County? If elected, how specifically would you coordinate with the other elected fish officials in your district? So first up, we have Melissa and then Clint.
Thank you. Uh broadband, broadband expansion is very important that we all work together. Our outline rural areas uh kind of rely on other municipalities to have it for uh companies, internet service providers to come out to their communities. And it really doesn't stop at the county line because our uh it can go one way or the other. We can work with our county part, other county partners too. Um, and my time on the boards, I have reached out and worked collaboratively with other village trustees. Um, not so much Madison Alders, but I have reached out to them and look forward to working with them. I've been in touch with um uh the town of Cottage Grove and um town of Pleasant Springs that's currently in our district, District Thirty-Six. And so I look forward to continuing to work with municipalities on on broadband and other issues that affect our uh district. Thank you.
Okay, so next Clint and then Rick.
I think an area where increased government collaboration and coordination would really be serious benefits isn't combating toxic algae blooms on our lakes. Existing environmental programs we have rely on state funding that's been hamstrung since the Walker era. We need to find uh creative economic incentives for farmers so that they have the money needed to invest in sustainable technology and prevent the runoff that's fueling uh these algae growths. And one idea I'm really excited about is a sustainably sourced in Dane County food label. Is folks want to buy local and will pay a premium for organic and non-GMO products. And I think similarly, we'll pay a small premium to buy food that is raised or grown in a responsible manner that's protecting our lakes. But that label is only as powerful as there is awareness of it. And so I want to make sure that municipalities are promoting it, that the county's promoting it, that we're giving every opportunity uh for farmers and small businesses to get involved with it. Because the more money we can raise through a program like that, the more we can do to protect our lakes.
Okay. Next, well, Rick and then Sarah.
Great, thank you. And I want to thank Sue too, doing a great job holding that twenty second card up. Sorry if I'm not honoring it all the time, but yeah, thanks for the thumbs up there. Yeah, I've been fortunate, you know, this is new to me. This is my first foray into public service work. I decided, as I mentioned earlier, with Supervisor Ritt saying, you know, Rick, it's probably time you step it up. Um, at fifty-seven years old, I feel I'm well experienced. I've been around. I hosted a show called Discover Wisconsin for over nine years. I have the opportunity to see seventy-two county governments at work, whether promoting economics or tourism or the wonderful parts of their city, their town, their community. I love when our uh state of that. I mean, I'm fortunate. A big part of my community is Madison. But I also have fifteen hundred people that live in Blooming Grove, and only eight of those could have the possibility of voting for me. It makes me very proud. When I met with Paul Esser, the mayor of uh Sun Prairie, he said, you're obviously doing your homework. So I don't know what it looks like after April fifth. I kind of have a good game of what it's going to look like or a good view of what it's going to look like. But I'm out meeting those people who we need to represent across all levels of government today. Thank you.
All right. Next Sarah and then Jacob.
Thank you. Yeah, I've really worked um certainly over the last two years, but many years before that um to build connections and bridges between local elected officials at the City of Madison and here in Manona where I'm um sitting seating right now. Um, I've served on the Sustainability Committee with the City of Manona for several years. Um, a couple of years before I stepped up to run for county board. And that certainly has given me an opportunity to build deep relationships and connections, not only with the local elected officials, but with other community members who've stepped up to serve on those committees um to to make their voices heard and share their expertise. And one of the ways that I've already been able to utilize those great relationships and connections is with the San Domiano property. Um, when that property went up for sale, one of the first things I did when I came into office was work on um putting together a proposal to support that through the county. And my past experience with uh state government and local government made me successful in that, collaborating with the Lake Edge Neighborhood Association and certainly with the City of Manona um to make sure that that was a preservation that everyone was comfortable with and met everybody's needs to make sure that that property is available to the public as it is today. Thanks.
Thank you. Right, that concludes question five. Question six is, oh, I'm sorry, Jacob. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, the previous answers were great, so you know. So uh you know, I Melissa brought up broadband, and I just wanted to share, you know, I think that is so, so important. And I saw that firsthand. As I mentioned before, my wife is an MMSD public school teacher. And access to broadband, uh you know, fast, reliable internet, really, it it that that was, there were tremendous disparities there. And everything, we need all hands on deck there. Everything that we can do as a county and as individual municipalities to make that right uh really opens up the doors to better participation and more opportunities. I it it's an essential utility in twenty twenty-two, especially after COVID, and we need to treat it that way. Another is transportation. You know, you brought that up as an area where we collaborate, and we do collaborate today. But I would want to look for closer collaboration on public transportation. There are a lot of municipalities in our county that aren't well supported, uh like Melissa brought up with Cottage Grove, and that's an area where I'd want to see more collaboration. I have firsthand experience there. I lived here without a car for years and commuted out of the city, and it wasn't great. Uh, and the last is homelessness, uh which we've already discussed. Sorry.
Sorry to cut you off there. Okay, I think now we've concluded question five. Uh, question six is also a one minute question, and the order of respondents there. Um, I I'll let you go first this time, Jacob. So we'll have Jacob, then Sarah, then Clint, and Melissa, and then lastly, Rick. And question six again for one minute is, if elected, how would you address the socioeconomic inequalities of mental health services in Dane County for individuals with and families living in poverty who are being disproportionately left behind in the mental health system? So, um Jacob and then Sarah.
Yeah, sure thing. So I think expansion of cares is is huge for this for crisis, but uh for crisis response. But another thing I would do is look for programs within communities that we can collaborate with. And this is a model that has worked during COVID. And just as an example, um we partnered with community-based nonprofits to give uh vaccine education and vaccination opportunities in a language-appropriate, hyper-localized manner. And that's working. We're doing that today. And I don't see a reason why we can't expand that model to other areas like mental health support, where we're not necessarily uh needing to build something new from the top to down. We can work with people who are already doing that work and support that work today in a in a community, in a truly community-based manner. Um, I would look for opportunities like that, and I would uh and I would listen to those groups to find out what they need from the county.
Thank you. Sarah and then Clint.
Thank you. I think um Jacob just brought up a great point on kind of the differences between maybe the crisis response. And we've already talked about that a little bit with the CARES um emergency response initiative and also on the Mental Health Crisis Center. Um, one other piece that I would be um interested in in continuing to work on is around healthcare coverage. Um, because you know, we do have a mental health parity law federally um that requires those health insurers to cover things related to mental and behavioral health. Um, but most, um not most people, quite a lot of people uh don't have access to health insurance in the first place. Uh, right now, there are ARPA subsidies in place that have made um healthcare as universally accessible as it's ever been before through the healthcare marketplace, healthcare.gov. Um, and navigators and certified application counselors can help people get enrolled in that coverage. Hopefully, those ARPA subsidies will be made permanent. That's something President Biden called for in his State of the Union um a couple of months ago. And I think providing more support so that staff at our public health department, who already help people get enrolled in that coverage, can enroll more folks and go out into the community and connect with those community leaders to reach those that we need to um is another important way to make sure everyone has access to health, uh mental health care specifically.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Clint and then Melissa.
Mental health care is so tough in that there is a national um shortage in mental health care professionals. And even here in Madison, even eight to twelve week wait just for counseling. And if you have more specialized needs, it can be as high as three months or more, and that's extremely concerning. And I think one of the best things we can do at the county level is create incentive programs to get mental health providers to relocate here and also work with local educational institutions, particularly particularly UW Mass and Edwood College to increase the number of slots they have in relevant programs. Uh, for example, the MSW program, we need to have more people completing that every single year because when they come out, they become counselors in the community. And so increasing that local supply is really important. And I think having grant programs with stipulations attached that when you graduate or if you relocate here, you're going to accept insurance, including badger care. And for folks who aren't insured, you're willing to do a sliding scale program. And I think interventions like that would do a lot to reduce the wait times and get people the care they need in a timely manner.
Melissa, you're up next, and then Rick.
Thank you. Um, it was brought up that there isn't necessarily great service throughout our community. There's not enough mental health providers, and I think one way to expand that is by expansion of broadband. Um, having access to video visits and telehealth for um for our community members that don't have um transportation um is is uh one way that they can get better access, I guess, to mental health services. Um, I've found that a lot of um of uh mental health counselors are also on the west side of Madison. So it makes it difficult if you live on the east side that you you have to try to find time in your day to get over to the west side. Um, if your children are in it, you have to take them out of school and spend half a day doing that back and forth. And that's with um health insurance. So we uh expansion of broadband will be a great help with that.
Rick?
Yeah, definitely. This is a dear, dear thing. I don't think there's a person on this call or listening in that isn't challenged with mental health issues today. Um, you know, mine's about aligning with the right people that are at the right place at the right time. I'm fortunate. And one of my best friends for thirty-five years is Pam Lano. She works for the Department of Health here in Wisconsin. And just even while shopping at Costco last Sunday, we were able to talk about the work she's doing and the work that I would like to do in Dane County and how the two can help each other and move forward. I also was the chair of the uh PIP, uh it's called PIPSY, which is the Opiate Crisis uh Group that deals with the LGBT community. And the peer work we did, people that are living in recovery, helping those that are challenged. Peer work is something I really want to explore on the uh on the level of Dane County. Also, I'm fortunate to be appointed to the um the statewide AIDS planning group. And while COVID hit and I was still a hit, while I was still a member of that committee, we are dealing with disparity every day. The face of HIV and AIDS that I knew thirty years ago is now the face today of transgender black women in communities like Dane County and Milwaukee County. And lastly, I want to say I'm fortunate to be speaking at an upcoming conference for NAMI, and we need to deal with mental wellness as well as mental health.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, uh, we are on to question seven. Question seven is a two minute question, and we'll start with Clint, followed by Sarah, then Melissa, Jacob, and finally Rick. So again, uh, a two minute question for question seven. What criteria would you use to balance Dane County's responsibilities in natural resources, conservation, sustainability, recreation, urban planning, and development? After describing your criteria, please say how you would apply them to the need for balancing winter road maintenance practices that keep people safe with the need to protect our ground and surface waters from chloride pollution from road salt use?
We're so lucky to live somewhere as beautiful as Dane County, and so preserving that natural beauty is of course a top priority. For being one of the one hundred largest cities in the country, we have the most parks and publicly available green space. And so continuing to prioritize that, improve our trailways for bikes and shared use is always a priority. And at the same time, we have to recognize that we're a rapidly growing county. Official projections say that another another two hundred thousand people are going to move here in the next twenty years. I think it is, the impacts are more apparent. Uh, the growth is going to exceed even those estimates. And so I think it's important to take a really comprehensive view and think, where are our areas of weakness in terms of flood vulnerability, especially with more intense rainstorms? Where are our erosion risks? And where are the safest, um, most environmentally sustainable places to develop and aiming our development there? Um, because if we just let it happen in a slipshod manner, it's going to have really severe consequences down the line. Um, going toward winter road maintenance, I want to do more to standardize salt application because you see some communities that do a great job of doing a a minimal amount that keeps us safe but does not unnecessarily pollute our environment. And then there are other municipalities um which I won't name and shame right now, but that seem to literally dump buckets of salt across the roads um in a really needless manner, and and also making sure that private actors are being responsible there too. Um, whether it's something like Woodman's Grocery Store, you see some private actors that are doing things the right way and others that again are um prioritizing their own planned or common good, which is not acceptable. And we need to have a better enforcement there. And another thing to consider, if we're talking about roadways in the wintertime, is again, just continuing to improve public transit so people don't rely on using their single vehicle to get where they need to go. And uh, a community where folks don't have to be a two-car household to have a high quality of life. And again, prioritizing density along mass transit routes is, I think, a good part of it.
Thank you. Next, uh, Sarah and then Melissa.
Thank you. I think that's a great question, and to me, this is really um critical to most of the things that we work on at the county board is understanding how we can both support a thriving community with a strong economic base and also balance that with protecting the lakes that we are really known for in Dane County. Um, you know, living right on the the south side of of Lake Manona, we do experience a lot of blue-green algae blooms. Um, we're of course at risk of PFOS throughout the county and really throughout the state. Um, and those are really important things that we need to be uh addressing to make sure that any development that we support, any uh future construction projects that are being considered are always evaluated for environmental impact. Um, I think, you know, the San Domiano property I think, you know, the San Domeno property is an example of looking at understanding the need for preserving certain property while also generally supporting greater housing density and making sure that those lake shore, lakefront areas that are both prone to flooding and more likely to pollute the lake is there, right? You know, it has a thousand feet of frontage are preserved to prevent that increased runoff and increased potential flooding risk. I think, you know, also understanding some of the ways that we could look at development in other parts of the county, I said on the zoning and land regulation committee. And, you know, in that time, we've definitely approved and not approved some development based on its increased flooding risk with climate change. We know that whether you live in a special flood zone, a flood hazard special zone or not, you are very likely to experience flooding. Flooding is our top climate risk here in Wisconsin. So any development that we are undertaking, we need to make sure that we are maintaining trees, for example, trees and their root systems retain a significant amount of water. We're not increasing solids that are putting that at risk. And just to the roadways, I'll just speak to the salt in our lakes in general. I've had some great conversations lately with folks about a general water softener system that would prevent an increase of salt that's going into the water from everyone's individual water softeners. So I think there are a lot of opportunities. We have to address that here too. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Melissa and then Jacob.
Thank you. The winter road maintenance is really interesting because in the village of Cottage Grove, last winter, we implemented using less salt on our roads as a pilot project that worked on a couple of streets to just see how our community members would deal with that. And it worked well. And so we implemented using less salt. In Cottage Grove, we aren't near a lake. Like it's in our outlying communities, it's hard to get people to understand the importance of that. And so education is really important. The I've been working on trying to get a leafback truck in Cottage Grove because we don't have one and we have a compost site that we have to break up our leaves and take it to the compost site, which a lot of people do. But the leafback truck would make it easier for people to break it to the near the curb so that then we can just come by and get it. But because I've been working on trying to have the county help with help communities to do that type of work, it led me to include in our 2022 budget, a compost grant. So it's a $10,000 budget amendment to provide municipalities, tribes, community gardens and nonprofits the opportunity to apply for grants ranging from $500 to $2,500 to help cover the expenses in providing a compost site in their community and neighborhood. Eligible expenses would include signage and construction material costs associated with the creation of compost drop off areas at the applicant's location. Additionally, Dane County Department of Waste and Renewables is willing to provide technical expertise to help set up drop off areas, create messaging to citizens and complete the WDNR permitting and find compost sites to take the material. So that's one way to help our outline areas with the sustainability and helping the lakes.
Jacob and then Rick.
Yeah, sure thing. So so jumping a little bit off of that, if I'm not mistaken, expansion of the ability to do drop off for waste, including composting, but not just composting, is one of the focus areas of the development of the new sustainability campus, which is actually going to be, I don't know if it's in your district, Melissa, but it's it's very, very proximal to all of our districts, which which is great news for sustainability. And so that's something that's great that we're doing and we need to continue to support that. Also related to that, it's my understanding that we are investing in natural gas powered snow plows. So you brought up, you know, clearing the snow in an environmentally safe way. I agree with what everybody else has said about salt and alternatives to salt, but that's another area where we can promote sustainability while allowing people to get to and from in the days following a snowstorm here in Wisconsin. There the other part of the question, I'm going out of order, I apologize. But the other part of the question was about just prioritizing development and balancing that with environmental needs. You know, I, we definitely do need to be looking at flood risk, especially as global warming becomes more serious. Trees have come up and also just canopy cover, which is not just a sustainability issue. It's also a livability issue in in warm weather especially. And trees are also pleasant. So that's something that we would want to preserve in our development. We would also want to make sure that there's proximate recreation and proximate transportation. I support, generally speaking, looking first to infill. We do still have space in Madison to do infill and that's a relatively easier way to connect with transportation and walkable communities and walkable recreation that already exists. And out county, to the extent that we can build those connections, that's absolutely something that we should be doing as well. Because that is the way to the future. Thank you.
Next, Rick.
Thanks, Arden. I'll follow your order, Jacob, because this is the last time I want to talk about snow and tell about eight months from now. You know, I'm very proud to be a Wisconsinite, having hosted Discover Wisconsin, as I referenced earlier, traveling around the state, learning people, how things operate on a municipal level has been a great thing. And the ingenuity of Wisconsin is so amazing. Jacob talks about, you know, integrating snowplows that use different kind of fuel. Melissa shared a story on her Facebook page and I saw it on local news about the two sided snowplow. We're doing double the work with one effort, you know, Wisconsin is creative. And many on this call may not know, but there are parts of northern Wisconsin that use cheese prime to to melt the snow on the roads. And that is something that I would advocate for. Having worked with the agricultural community, also, you know, someone I work with on regular pace basis is the Secretary of Transportation, Craig Thompson. Secretary Thompson and I talk regularly about how unique that program is and how that could spread throughout the state. I also want to applaud, you know, Dane County road crews because Wisconsin, for over 100 years, the Department of Transportation on the state level has employed county government to do Wisconsin, county highway departments are plowing and controlling all state and US numbered highways. That's something we forget really can boost our revenue here is by having partnerships with states and other organizations do that work. On to sustainability, I referenced earlier that I've been proud and grateful to have been the creator of a show called Into the Outdoors airs on public television, PBS nationally, is dubbed in Spanish down to Puerto Rico. And it's all based here on the sustainable level of sustainability we have in Wisconsin. This weekend, you can watch it tomorrow morning on WKOW. We did an episode in conjunction with the DNR about careers in lumber, in timber and all that field, which is very rich here in Wisconsin. So I would say we have to remind the new generation how interesting non technological things can be and how to invest them back into studies of sustainability and living a sustainable lifestyle.
Thank you.
Thank.
All right. Next, we'll have the eighth and final question before candidates will have a one minute closing remarks. And so for question eight, we'll have Clint first and Jake, then Jacob, then Sarah, then Rick, and finally Melissa. And the two minute question for question eight is in 1988, the DNR documented PFOS in the Starkweather Creek. PFOS have been discovered in Lake Monona, Mendota, and the rest of the lakes connected by the Yahar River. After years of companies poisoning our waterways, Dane County has filed a lawsuit against chemical companies that may take your, may take years to settle. In the meantime, contamination from companies continues to pollute Dane County waterways. As a Dane County supervisor, besides waiting for the lawsuit to settle, what immediate steps will you take to block further degradation of Dane County's lakes and fishery that threatens Dane County's way of life? So we begin with Clint and then Jacob.
I think the first thing is the simplest thing, and that's just community education, making sure folks are aware of the danger. Here in Monona, we still don't have signs of letting people know about the PFOS and the risk of eating fish from the lake. And there are still people that eat at a subsistence level and making sure that they are safe is extremely important. And that's something we need to do immediately. In the long term, I really want to strengthen our relationship with the University of Wisconsin-Madison and make sure that we are a national pioneer in this research. PFAS are colloquially known as forever chemicals for a reason. And at this point, we don't have good treatment options. Our only options at this point are monitoring and then working to prevent further contamination, as you alluded to. And so for monitoring, I think it's be, it's important that we continue to not only petition the Wisconsin DNR, but also the EPA to get federal funding to make sure we have extremely robust monitoring as it relates to our drinking water. And that we're very strict about preventing further contamination. A lot of it's come from the air, the air force or the airports or hand the air force actually. And firefighting training there and making sure that they change their practices so that when they're doing training exercises, they're not poisoning our water. It's just unacceptable. And we need to cut off that contamination at this point. And then work to find solutions in the long term to address the damage that's already been done.
Thank you. Next, Jacob. And then Sarah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So so one concern I have here is the fact that we don't have adequate monitoring and source finding the sources of all of this pollution. And, you know, that's because not enough is being done at a federal level, not enough is being done at a state level. And so unfortunately, it falls to us as a county and keeping our, the the people who we serve safe is our primary charge as a county board. And we can't say that we're doing that unless we get to the bottom of this. So that does mean most likely funding additional resources and funding additional staff so that we can get to the bottom of where this is even coming from and what the scope of the problem really is. I know it's immense, but but we 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 need to find out. And then, yeah, the Clint's point, making sure people are aware, working with local groups, I think signage is important. And and any partnerships that we could have with with local groups, the university who might be able to lead us to a solution for mitigation, that's that would be something that we would need to work toward as well. Because we very much do need to solve this. We owe our children and their children clean, safe drinking water and air that they can breathe. That's the bottom line. So we need to figure out the scope of the problem, where it's coming from and work from there. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Sarah and then Rick.
Thank you. Yeah, PFAS are a huge, a huge concern and it is an issue that is affecting, as I mentioned, you know, statewide, nationwide. And it's something that no one has solved at any level yet. I mean, as Jacob alluded to, there are all of these different levels of governments involved and taking that collaboration, certainly with the state, but with other municipalities as well. It's going to take that kind of collaboration and partnership to have a cohesive approach to PFAS. In my day job, I sit on the governor's PFAS Action Council. So, you know, we have great people at the DNR at, you know, these experts who are really trying to understand the scope of this issue and bringing us updates all the time on research that's being done around the impacts of PFAS and the ways that it might be mitigated. I mean, as one of the other issues is just understanding how to remove it in the first place. There is no solid answer on that yet and how to even prevent it from leaching further into soil and groundwater and into our lakes. So it's it's going to take a lot of this partnership across these many levels of government so that we can do our part to participate in that work. While also, you know, there are limits, of course, to what the county can do. And so just providing our own advocacy for initiatives at the state level. Unfortunately, we do not currently have a legislature that's been willing to take these issues on. Though the governor has made it a top priority of his. But it's something we're seeing statewide. So I'm hopeful that potentially in the next legislative session or in future sessions, the state legislature will take a more proactive approach to provide funding and resources for this because it is going to take those state partners and federal partners for us to be successful in this. Of course, there are things the county can do and has already taken action toward as the, as you mentioned in the question. I co sponsored the resolutions to initiate legal action against PFAS manufacturers and distributors to hold them accountable for what they've done here in Dane County. And I also co sponsored Supervisor Chavla's resolution to increase transparency around PFAS use at the airport. So from the very beginning, we understand additional pollution that may be resulted from airport construction projects and other work at the airport.
Rick and then Melissa.
Thank you so much. Sarah, thank you so much for that response. I also want to thank you for your response in Dane County jail. And I look forward to doing work with you after April 5th as well. It's exciting. I am very grateful for our Board of Supervisors in the county of Dane to step it up and realize this is an issue. To put in perspective, I didn't really know what a PFOS was until I started talking about being on the board and understanding it better. So many on this call may not even be aware of it. They're probably Googling as we speak. But to put the dire straight, you know, situation to set it straight, this is the next Agent Orange. And I am grateful. I'm not here to complain. I appreciate everyone's response that we are recognizing it. We are working toward it. We are aware of it. But urgency is everything, you know, we all should be able to drink water comfortably. We should be able to go to a stream over on the western edge of our county and catch a trout that we want to enjoy the taste of. These are issues that have been felt before and dealt with mercury in the Great Lakes of Wisconsin. The DNR recognized this as our, and said back in 1988, let's not let this be another jail project that takes 10 years or 20 years to come to terms with. I'm very grateful that people are taking it seriously, stepping up and starting the conversation. I would say a lot of his education, Jacob and Clint are absolutely right. We shouldn't be complacent. We shouldn't sit back and wait for a county board meeting every two weeks to step in and say, come on, we need to post that the that the fish from this water is currently dangerous. And then we need to motivate people how to make it not dangerous again and what we can all do to step in and and make it better. I would encourage anybody that hasn't seen the movie by another great Wisconsinite, Mark Ruffalo, who is very near and dear to this subject. And he did a movie called Dark Waters. Please, please watch that movie for those of the hear this conversation or joining us for the first time. We look forward to hearing from our constituents and neighbors and how we can all come together and and battle this. It is a serious, serious issue. So thanks for the question. Really appreciate it.
Melissa?
Thank you. A education on the danger of PFAS is super important, just that I'm all about educating our residents and people on PFAS and what it is and the dangers that it poses. How much you can or can't drink or how much fish is safe or not. The research and studies continue. There are is a study being done at our airport currently and hopefully how to get rid of the forever chemicals. So I think continuing to support initiatives like that and studies will hopefully yield some good results, but currently, I mean, not not yet. There's still forever chemicals. The governor recently funded for local municipalities to test their wells, which I think is important. So it's not just a Madison issue, it is a whole state, nation, world issue with PFAS. And the unfortunately, we haven't solved the other issues that are in our drinking water either. I mean, there are still places where they are dealing with lead in their water and other other bacteria and those things. So PFAS is just another chemical that is in our water that is dangerous and we need to continue to work on preventing those things from happening. The one thing that I would like to point out is that PFAS in our water is not just an airport issue. It did happen near our airport because that's where the firefighting firefighting training was happening because it is in the firefighting foam. But this is a countywide issue and it's important that all of our departments work together on this because it could be in other areas besides just by our airport. So I am supporting that our departments work together as well as putting additional funding in to the county budget to work to address this. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes our prepared questions. We are going to have a round of closing remarks from all of our candidates. And the order of speakers for the closing remarks, which will be limited to one minute, are Sarah Smith, then Melissa Ratcliffe, followed by Rick Rose, then Clint Kevany, and finally Jacob Wright. So for your one minute closing remarks, would you like to start Sarah Smith?
Sure. Thank you. And I just want to say first, I thank you to the Eastside Progressives for hosting this. I'm so grateful for the really active neighborhood teams and organizations we have throughout Dane County. I've always been active with with Blue Team. So I don't know, Eastside Progressives quite as well, Blue Team here in in Monona. But I am just grateful for you putting this to But I am just grateful for you putting this together. And over the past hour or so, we've discussed a lot of issues I've already taken action on in my first term on the board, from clean water to homelessness to true justice reform. I think my values are clear and I have a proven record on all of these issues. I've spent the last two years working to ensure that Dane County will continue to be a leader on issues of sustainability and racial equity and gender equity. And I think we all share a vision of a Dane County that's a green leader for the rest of our state, a Dane County that's more fair and equitable, a community built on inclusion and collaboration. And I know we discussed collaboration quite a bit tonight, and I do think that's really key to being successful in this role on local government. So I hope that I can count on the votes of anybody from District 24 that may be here today to reelect a proven leader who shares your values to another term on the Dane County Board. Thank you.
Next, Melissa and then Rick.
Thank you for the opportunity, opportunity to serve District 36 in our community. In the next term, I look forward to continuing my work with my colleagues to advance items to help our district. My experience will help me to continue to put forward support and advocate for initiatives for our youth and seniors, increase access to our parks, bike paths and libraries, support people of color and the LGBTQIA plus communities, continue to improve our roads with a focus on making them multi use for bikes and cars, support initiatives for our environment, including clean lakes and flood prevention, and work on expanding access to broadband, which impacts so many different facets of life, including jobs, school, health and entertainment. If you have questions or concerns, please reach out to me at mratcliffecommittee@gmail.com. And also please check out my website at ratcliffefordanecounty.com for more information about me, my work and my campaign. I'm Melissa Ratcliffe and I ask for your vote for County Board Supervisor of District 36.
Thank you. Rick and then Clint.
Thank you so much. Please follow our journey up to April 5th. Our website is rickrosefor, that's the word for, so rickrosefordanecounty.com. You can find us on social media on Facebook as well as YouTube. Being in the business of television, we are going to be using a lot of video to communicate our messages. And we really want feedback. Just because I'm posting, you may not be able to post a video, but certainly write me, would love to talk to you real time. What speaks volumes about the people that are behind the Rick Rose for Dane County campaign, these are people that are committed to continue on beyond April 5th. In other words, I don't have a campaign manager. Alex is my constituent relationship guy. He's out there speaking to people, hearing what their needs are and just learning the, what's ahead of us and what are their priorities. So please follow that journey. I want to remind you, you can all make a difference. The reality is you can step up and do what each of us on this call is doing today, whether we're currently in the position or will earn that position come April 5th. And all these folks, so many people that endorse and supported me, I will be the same for you. If you want a voice at the table, you want to do it at the level we're doing it, it's very accessible. If you want to do it by participating and just expressing your opinions, that's great. I want to end with a quick quote from Margaret Mead, never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Thank you for your time and thank you guys for organizing this event.
Thank you. Clint and then Jacob.
I want to say thank you to the Eastside Progressives for organizing this and for everyone that's tuned in. Really appreciate the opportunity to share my ideas with you. If I'm elected, I'm going to bring in a grassroots approach to this office and involve as many people as possible. My absolute top priority is forming law enforcement hiring, making sure that we have officers we can trust and depend on, that we no longer have officers who break the trust in one community and simply move a couple of towns over and repeat that cycle. Otherwise, I want to bring innovative approaches to combating toxic algae blooms on our lakes. It is of the utmost importance that kids, they are able to swim in the lakes, just like I did when I was a kid. I also want to bring forward solutions to solve the housing crisis. And I think throughout all of that, the more folks we get involved, the better our government will do. With that in mind, I'd like to end with a quote from our former Senator and Governor, Robert M. LaFollette, which is publicity, discussion and agitation are necessary to accomplish any work of lasting benefit. That's why I'm running. I want to create that publicity and discussion, want to agitate for change and bring as many folks along as I can with, I hope earning your vote. Thank you.
Jacob.
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank everybody who's, who's dedicated a beautiful evening, one of the first of this year to listening to us speak tonight and to the Eastside Progressives for organizing this excellent forum. Because, you know, we've talked a lot tonight about the challenges we face and some of the stark disparities we have across racial and and class lines in in this county. And remedying that and making this a place where everyone can thrive is only going to happen if we all commit to working together, collaborating on finding solutions and achieving solidarity with all of our neighbors. And in the spirit of that, especially as a first time candidate, I want to hear from you. If you have ideas, concerns, challenges that you don't think were addressed, things you disagree with that I've said, please reach out. You can find me at rightfordanecounty.com. Email is info@rightfordanecounty.com. I'm also on Facebook and Instagram with my name and I'd love to talk to you. And I would be honored to earn your vote on April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for this evening. I would like to thank all of the candidates who joined us and spoke so eloquently about their vision and goals for the future of Dane County. I would also like to thank the attendees for joining us. The key to a vibrant and healthy democracy is for as many people as possible to participate in public discussions such as this. I would also like to thank everyone on the Eastside Progressives who helped make this forum possible tonight. Those doing tech support, publicity and developing the forum questions. If you're at all interested in attending future ESP events or volunteering with our group, I encourage you to follow us on social media and contact us via email. The midterm elections are fast approaching and we will want all the volunteers we can get to knock on doors and make phone calls. In the immediate future though, we do, we do not forget to vote on April 5th for the Dane County Board of Supervisors and the Madison School Board elections, as well as many other local races. Absentee ballots can be requested up until five days before the election day and some locations are doing early voting for now. All of this information about where to vote, how to vote and how to register to vote can be found at myvote.wi.gov. And don't forget again, we'll have a recording of this available shortly and we'll post the link to that recording on our Facebook page. Thank you and good evening, everyone.